Really? Are we wedding? Okay. All right, I'm uh. Calling to order the special meeting of the City of Mary Esther Council, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five at six P M. Uh, would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Why do we just to define the United States of America? So the problem is, it's a nation, you know, the result of the meeting.
Thank you. Next, I would like the city clerk to do a roll call of the council.
Councilmember Sutton.
Here.
Councilmember Coxwell.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson.
Present.
Councilmember Carter.
Here in the flesh.
Mayor Proton Motor.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Now, do I have a motion to allow Hayward Dykes to do this thing remotely? Uh, Hayward doesn't look good, I don't have the motion. See you later.
I heard Mr. Carter was coming back into town, figured I better get out.
Yeah, you, we can't have too many people here, so you're blowing it off. Okay, now, we can live with that. Okay, tonight's agenda, do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I have a first.
I'll second.
And I have a second. Any discussion, let's go ahead and vote. Where's my clicker? Oh, get your clicker out here. And we are unanimous, great, and you have to ask, how you vote, Mr. Carter? All right, new business, six point one parks and greenways and master plan presentation. Go ahead, sir.
All right, new business, six point one parks and greenways and master plan presentation. Go ahead, sir. All right. Well, thank you for having us this evening. Uh, my name is Ron Yearwood, I'm a senior planner at Barge Design Solutions, we've been working closely with um the Parks and City staff here on the Mary Esther Comprehensive Parks Recreation Master Plan. Many of you participated in some of the public engagement activities we had back in April and March and February. Um, so this is just an update where we are today. Um, we've started to look at um a lot of the feedback that we got from the public engagement um activities, as well as looked at um some concept plans for five of the parks and recommendations that came out of that public input. The concept plans, I want to emphasize, these are concepts and kind of diagrammatic, so what you'll see later on in the presentation um is to get some feedback also from you guys, um the, the way we've laid them out, there are many scenarios these parks could be laid out with the amenities that were proposed from the public in- input, so we're still refining that. Um, and then also in the master plan, I'll go through a few other items that will be in that uh report, um including some of the implementation strategies. So, we're kind of in this phase three piece, developing that master plan and the concept park designs. So, why does this matter? There we go. Benefits of parks, you all um recognize the benefits of parks, they're a crucial component to a healthy and vibrant community, they provide access to recreation, um gathering spaces for social events, they provide a number of physical and psychological benefits. What's also unique about Mary Esther is this um your location and in the Pensacola Bay watershed, a robust park system can provide benefits in, for the environment, um especially in terms of water quality, um coastal resilience, um et cetera. When we did the city vision plan a couple of years ago, that public input, some of the results out of that, seventy-eight percent of people were were willing to walk or bike to parks, school, or work if it was safe and convenient, so also, we're looking at that connectivity piece of how people can get around Mary Esther without a car. Part of that public input also said they were okay with spending more on parks and recreation and transportation maintenance and water quality. And then we asked um certain elements that if, what they would want to see in, in a more of a town center component, and again, that outdoor gathering space, community centers, um splash pads, these kind of community activities rose up to the top from that feedback. And this, this year, through our public engagement, we had two meetings with stakeholders, we had a staff questionnaire, an online public survey, as well as the public open house. And out of that, we have these key themes um that kind of rose to the top, what is the role of parks, what are the most requested amenities, what's the priorities and programming, how are we going to maintain and operate this over time, what are the environmental and coastal impacts, um looking at connectivity in Mary Esther, and then we had a lot of very park-specific comments and notes. There we go. Maybe. There we go, all right, these are just some snapshots, I'll try to go through these pretty quick, but um on the public survey, online survey, when people were asked certain questions, the, the larger, these are the word clouds, the larger the word, the more responses that that word got, so, get a lot of dog park, pickleball, public restroom, splash pad, um those kind of popular facilities really rose to the top um throughout the public engagement process. In terms of programs, a lot of community-focused programs came to the top, concerts, outdoor movies, farmers market, community gardens, community events, there's one that says community anything, so I think there's real need for these kind of community gathering spaces and programs. And then, asking the question, what improvements would make the biggest impact on your experience, um the top three, that one on the far right, it's kind of hard to see, but basically, better maintain, maintenance of the existing facilities was the number one, um with uh more playgrounds and play areas, more trails and greenways, and then splash pads, it was kind of the top three and four items. Uh, we had a funding exercise, I think many of you took part in this, where we gave you fake money um to prioritize what elements and facilities you wanted to invest in, you were only given like twenty bucks, and each element cost a different amount, so you couldn't just buy everything. Um, we tried to emphasize to that priority piece where um what's most important to you, so these are the top four um that came out of that funding exercise, dog parks, community garden, disc golf, and pickleball courts. We had a number of character image boards, um these are the top three images from the Parks and Open Space Character Imagery Board. And then for community identity and signage, these are the top three images from that exercise, people were able to put kind of green dots and red dots, green dots on things they like and red dots on things they do not like. Um, so now I'm going to get in the meat of this, again, these are concept plans um and recommendations for all of the parks. In that public meeting, we had a station for each park, in addition to those, we also had some of those spaces that might be city-owned property or potential parks, where people could make uh comments or, or share ideas on how those could be improved. The, the five that we're looking at um for the deeper dive in concept plans, the first one is Springdale Park. These are some of the, the feedback and comments that we got from that public meeting, um a number of ideas, it's a pretty large park, there's a lot going on, um it's kind of under construction right now, or it's maintenance, so um it's a great opportunity to kind of think about it as a fresh place. Um, so that concept plan right now is looking at, what if we consolidate the pickleball courts, tennis, basketball, um upgrades to playgrounds, separating the playgrounds and the different age groups, um and improve restroom facility, additional parking, and also you have that access to the water tower. This park also has an easement, you can kind of see that arrow kind of going uh to the, to the right, that can be a potential greenway connection in that uh city-owned easement um to get through the neighborhood. There's also a pavilion uh located, kind of at central location next to the multi-use field um in the back, so having a variety of spaces, this does take away that uh ball field that was there uh previously, but um incorporates a lot more programming and activity and, and again, concentrates that pickleball, yeah.
That takes away the community garden as well.
It does, and I'll get to that in the next slide, um because the community garden rose to the top in a lot of the public feedback, there's a lot of input on that.
I got a question on that one.
Yes.
Basketball, is it that important? Um, I could say pickleball, because you know, it's.
We, we have a lot to play, and they wish they had bigger courts instead of.
I was gonna say, I should see a lot of people.
And one thing we were looking at, the basketball court, um they could also be striped for pickleball, so you could also fit another pickleball court or two on that basketball in addition to the tennis, so, about those as multi-use.
Six pickleball courts?
That's six, plus the tennis, and again, the tennis could be, you could add two more pickleball to the tennis court.
So eight.
So you could have eight, and you could have one more on the basketball.
One thing to add here too, just real briefly, so, part of this whole process is, kind of like Ron mentioned in the beginning, is understanding what types of amenities we want to provide and potentially in what parks.
Right.
So, this can scale, probably not up in this instance, but can certainly scale down.
Yeah.
Um, and as we go through this, what we really want to do is have um a budget number for each one of these parks, and then also a priority, so that as we put our C I P together, we can budget these over so many years, and then when it comes time to actually do the project, then we'll really get into the details of, of that design. Um, so at this point, it's more just kind of figuring out what type of amenities we want in each park.
Yeah, taking those amenities at scale, seeing what fits, what fits good together, um what's appropriate to have together, um and what neighborhood might be more attractive for certain elements.
Back to your basketball comment, we do have a lot of kids that play with the hoop into the street, which.
Yeah.
You know, it's.
No, no, I, I just.
They all, a lot of them.
Baseball, I, big deal, but yeah.
Yeah.
Basketball, okay.
Elliott Park is the other uh park that we're looking at, this is where the existing tennis facility is. Um, there was a number that said for pickleball to go here too, what's lacking in Elliott Park is a, uh parking, is kind of an issue here. Dog park was, kind of rose at the top at this location, so we're looking at um what if we move the community gardens to this location, adding two dog parks, one for small dogs, one for large dogs, again, those um pavilions that could be rented out at different times of the year, um introducing the fitness court, there's a couple of fitness courts in nearby um cities that we were looking at, um and that fits well in this, that corner. Um, one of the residents was promoting having a putting for disc golf, so that doesn't take up a lot of space, so that's kind of what you see between the fitness court and the community gardens. Some of that could be expanded, if you wanted to make a larger community garden, but this was a pretty central location, um and we thought was, might be a good trade uh from, from its current location. We also are showing two improved playgrounds in this area in the pink and purple, again, separating those two playgrounds by age group. And we can come back to any of these. Over here, next to the library, we looked at that green space in the corner of Doolittle and Hollywood, um there were a lot of ideas that came um through the public input process. A lot of it was focused on community events, concerts, um outdoor gathering spaces, so in this concept, we're showing what that kind of open lawn paired with uh band shell or, or stage, um with a, a shelter that could have, you know, for a band or a concert. The left side is kind of showing a, a, kind of a loop path around the park with pop-up tents for festivals or a farmers market. Um, on the right, closer to the library space, there was an idea for an outdoor classrooms, those could be educational gardens or something that's programmed with the library. Um, and again, more, more pavilions, um as well as landscape buffers along Hollywood, um just to provide that extra sense of security and safety uh for people kind of playing in the park. Brynmar Park, one of the larger parks here, maybe the largest. Some of the ideas, really keeping that ball field and upgrading, improving that existing condition, um upgrades to the uh playgrounds, and upgrades to the concession stand, so this concept really fitting in a lot here, um upgrades to that ball field, you can see two multipurpose fields um kind of placed in the outfield, um so you could get more use and more function out of that space. Um, there's a batting cage that's added uh just to the, to the south there, um additional parking along the streets. Um, two small dog parks, again, separating the lar- large dogs and small dark, small dogs, there was a need, um it came up again and again for this park to include some sort of dog park facility. Um, we see an opportunity here for a nature trail that's more of a loop trail, um that's close to the, where the playgrounds could be. Um, again, separating the age groups, adding more shelters, um but in that trail, you could mix in, those blue circles represent fitness stations or kind of the calisthenic trail, not as big as that fitness court, but something that's kind of small along the way um as you're working out or, or doing more of a passive walk. Um, you could also incorporate uh disc golf in this, um that could be phased in over time, but just kind of showing you a nine-hole get, disc golf, how that can fit in that zone.
This, that, this park is already, is currently being used by other organizations for soccer and such, correct?
I believe so, and that, that they.
Okay.
Um, and then for the fifth park that we looked at for a concept plan was the, actually the cemetery, Jesse Rogers Cemetery. Um, we went a little bit deeper than just a concept on this one, we got a lot of information, there was a survey done. So, this is looking at, how do we expand um so, some empty space that's in that cemetery to extend plots, um what we learned is that all, most of the business and services that the funeral director gets is uh cremation, so we looked at a couple of different uh concept plans, this one has kind of a, a variety and what's kind of, you can't see behind the number one, it shows the number of open plots, but also providing columbarium walls where you could have uh for urns, um you could have a scatter garden with plaques. So this concept provides that variety, there was a lot of input on, um this is right on the water, so what can you do to kind of address the water? Um, maybe not necessarily being on top of the water, but having some sort of pavilion that could be part of the service um a- as uh they're doing the funeral, almost like an open-air chapel.
And when you have that picture there, how close is it to Highway ninety-eight?
So, this is showing, I don't know if I, the pointer's gonna work. It is, we're showing a, a kind of a sound wall, so it's basically right on the sidewalk, that, the upper portion was.
So it's right on the highway.
It's right on the sidewalk, um so.
The whole idea was because of six-lane and everything else.
Yeah.
So you don't want to dig up graves while you.
So, um.
That would stop it, yeah.
So, no, we, we're showing um beyond the widening portion, so this incorporates the, the extent of the widening on this side, yes. And so the sound wall would be to the south of the future widening in the sidewalk, that's right, yeah.
Okay, I just curious, because, you know, I'm trying to get a survey.
Oh, yeah.
On April, our councilman Sutton, we're working on that, and you've got it, right? Something happening?
Yeah, so this is showing kind of newer entry point, um you know, targets just to the north, so there could be um overflow parking if they're doing a, a service with the crosswalk, the existing crosswalk's coming down on this direction, so having an entry from that point, this would be the scatter garden, um a water feature with um the columbarium walls, you can kind of see a, a photo example of what that could be. Um, they're basically double-sided, where you could have the urn plots on both sides. Um, I think the dimensions are like one by one or one and a half by one and a half. Um, the, in the radial portion, those are the open plots, um with um urn plots i- integrated into that design. The next one is more of a simplified version, if you just extend the open plots as is today, you know, how many you would get of just open plots, those could be, again, um converted to urn plots, you can get a num, like six or eight urn plots for one regular plot. This is a little bit more straightforward.
Yeah, aesthetically, I like this.
Yeah, yeah, the other one provides just more opportunity.
It's fancier.
Well, it's just, it's calming.
Go with the water.
Yeah, just having the circular and.
Yeah. How many more plots you gonna have?
So, it's, yeah, it's listed, and it's hard to see behind that, so this one shows um urn plots, has about fifteen hundred columbarium niches, it's about a thousand, scatter garden, you could do really, I mean, we said five hundred or more, but scatter garden could be indefinite. And then the grave plots, uh there were a hundred and seventy-six shown on this one.
Yeah, I like the round, it's calming.
Yeah, it is, it's peaceful.
Part of this concept is looking at this as a, almost like a park, treat it like a park, it's, it's a really beautiful open space, it's on the water, you have the beautiful um live oak trees, um and really a place where you can kind of, you know, go and visit relatives.
Streets.
Having a, yeah, exactly.
Or even stop at old.
Yeah, absolutely.
Very old.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But again, you know, just looking at numbers and what you could do, just even extending that, which trees are worth saving in that area, there's, there are a few that are, um we've marked, either they're dying or dead, um that could be removed, um but both scenarios try to save as many trees as possible. All right, so the other parks I, I mentioned, we had stations for each park at the uh public meeting, um so there are a number of recommendations. This small oak tree park, you know, what came up was that, could there be a connection in that, I think the street is Lorraine, to connect those two neighborhoods and shift some of the park amenities up closer to Hollywood. The water tower, Town Lane, you know, a really great opportunity to have a north-south connection between Hollywood and, and uh Miracle Strip Highway with a greenway connection, um it would just need to look at some of the existing fencing around the water tower to allow a path to go through, maybe some lighting.
I would be leery on that one, just because I, yeah, I'd be leery on that one.
Okay. Um, Oak Tree Nature Preserve, um some pretty straightforward improvements on this one, replacing or repairing the existing shelter. Um, a lot of the trail signage needs to be updated. A lot of the trail signage needs to be updated, um, and replaced. There's a potential to add another trail that's closer to the existing stream. Um, and that actually gets you closer to the intersection of Doolittle and the highway, which would connect you to the, where the Cove, um, and Cristobal Landing is, is happening. So really seeing that as a, another pedestrian connection and enhancing those trailheads along the highway in Doolittle. And then South Bryn Mawr Park. This one is an interesting, I think, especially when you're looking at phasing. Um, part of this is we realize that some of the park land is actually in the parking lot of the church property. Um, so having more of a partnership with that organization, um, especially during big events or festivities. But also that triangle zone. Making more of a, you could make more of a physical connection. Do you need actually both entrances here? Could you actually close this one off and recapture some of that pavement for park? Um, and really have one larger green space. The pier and boat ramp is primarily just, um, figuring out a better parking situation. There's not a lot of land to deal with over there, so that's kind of limited. There were some, uh, comments about paid launches. I think there is a kiosk, more of a honor system. And then adding more signage or a kiosk in that zone. We had this location, the pond on Bryant Circle, um, as a potential, um, donation of land, uh, to the city. So if that's the case, a lot of people were interested in using it for fishing and adding a dock, um, of some sort on Bryant Circle. We had Azalea Park, the, we know that's kind of under construction and kind of a done deal. So it was more just getting feedback. People really liked the nature trails and the trees. They wanted to make sure the trees were staying. So again, I mentioned that connectivity, we're looking at this as a system-wide recommendation. So this is, you know, showing all of the parks that are existing, what potential connections could be made? Where do you put those connections? Um, what land might have to be acquired over time to, to make that happen? But also looking at blue ways and your, uh, water access points, um, along the sound. And then the report, the master planner report will have a number of implementation strategies. Again, we're looking at this for maintenance and programming over time. Trying to think holistically about, um, about the funding strategies. Looking at short-term actions, these are just some draft, uh, short-term actions as we're phasing it in. Some midterm actions in that four to six-year period. And then some long-term actions up to ten years. And when we're talking about capital improvement pa- plan, we're thinking about it as a total cost of ownership. So it's the capital investment in addition to the operations and maintenance in addition to the lifecycle replacement. And we've started to develop, uh, capital improvement budget for this. So splitting each park, this is just kind of a snapshot of what it currently is. Each park has its own column. And then on the left, there are facilities, amenities, programs, um, even circulation and pavement. And giving those, uh, line item as a, a high-level budget, a conservative budget number. Um, and a budget for linear feet, if it's a greenway or a pavement. So we can start to tally up what each park might cost over time. Yep.
In your funding strategy, was any discussion given to dual-use funding with FEMA and the state when they have, uh, you know, it could be a park by day and, uh, full light and pub, uh, whatever they call themselves at night. You know, they come here for recovery, they need to place the park, place the camp, you know? If they help fund our park, you can have use for it during recovery after.
Okay. We are looking at a number of sources for funding, so, um, kind of making sure it has a well-rounded funding sources. Um, I don't know if that one is on this list, but basically we do want to establish some funding strategies. And if that's one that makes sense for this area, then we, we could look into that. Let me write it down real fast.
Yeah, if, uh, we could, when they built the Raider Gym, that's a shelter. During a time of need, but right now it's a gymnasium for the Raiders. So a lot of funding went into building that, all the bed space and the kitchen and the power. Not, nothing that elaborate for us, but we could have some sort of dual-use partnership.
Yeah.
With the state or with FEMA.
I have another project in Tennessee that, um, we're looking at a piece of land for that development for, it's, it's basically a community center, a daycare and a FEMA shelter. So, yeah, that, that does exist. And, yep, so the next steps, we're just gonna be refining the master plan and some of these concept plans. We'll present this a final presentation, um, where you can hopefully adopt this plan. And then starting to set those implementation milestones. That's it.
You have no idea what the cost is gonna be?
We've started, so it's, I know it's zoomed out, but thi- this will, um, once we plug in some more numbers, that will start to tell you basically what each park, based on the concepts, um, what those totals would be.
What was that, two hundred and thirty million?
Tw- that's, right now it's at twenty point three.
Twenty, okay.
That's looking at, you know, what the numbers are in there currently, so that might grow a little bit, might shrink a little bit, so. And again, that's, that's looking over that kind of ten-year timeline.
I was just curious.
All right.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. Unfortunately, the way the world's turning right now, have you been approached about putting some type of cameras? I'm not saying I want one on every corner or pointed every inch of the place. But it would be nice, I know for the, that we have, and I don't, as far as I'm put signs up, like speeding cameras. By the way, there's cameras here, so let's be smart, pick up after yourself, don't trash the place. Don't try to mug some old person like me or whatever, that, you know, also, if you're not taking care of your dog business, by the way, we now, um, again, I'm, but do we, have you been approached about some type of camera systems like that?
We haven't had that many discussions. A lot of times it's focused on the facilities in particular at, uh, different parks, not necessarily, you know, all around the park, but really just kind of keeping people out from when they're not supposed to be in there. But, I mean, we can look into other precedents.
And the reason I say, we're talking about our Cristobal Landing down there in the county, and that, yeah, we, I don't want it to become a homeless shelter.
Sure.
Or any, so if we only put one camera in it, move, you know, just, just make it as safe as possible. Same with lighting, solar panels, wherever, you know, that we can keep the place well-lit. There you go, um, you know, safety's.
Those are the strategies that actually tend to work the best, is making them more lit, you know, and they're also inviting. But.
They also don't want ballpark lights out there in the middle of the night when you're in a neighborhood.
Yeah.
Living next door to them.
I have a question about the budget. With these, S, and I get these are, you know, ballpark figures, but is this taken into consideration hiring contractors to do it?
Yep.
Okay.
So two things real quick, if I could. So the one on the question about security, um, yes, we have had the discussion with the county about putting in, you know, some cameras down there at Cristobal Park. And so I think certainly as we, as we start talking more about parks and this plan is adopted, um, I do think that's something that council will want to consider, not necessarily putting cameras all the way around the park.
Right.
But, you know, if we have a facility that's particularly, you know, uh, a high-dollar investment that you want to protect, um, at least something that's there as a deterrent, something that potentially, if there was vandalism, the sheriff's department could have access to the footage. And then I guess my general question for the council, and this is kind of being touched on with the budget question, which is, as you've seen these, um, these rough draft of the concept plans, you know, do you want us to look at potentially scaling down? So like, as you see the, uh, pickleball courts, instead of, I forget how many we had there, you know, just a couple? Or those types of things.
I, I'm not real comfortable with this plan until we can actually pull off a successful park. And so far, we don't have a successful park renovation currently in our city. So until I see that, um, I, I'll start directing those phone calls to you for Azalea Park.
You can't call me.
Yeah, it's.
Azalea Parks, I, I was pretty pleased with. I think the walkway is, is, you know, hit or miss with everybody, but that's everybody.
It's, yeah, I'm.
I think part of the intent for this, at least for this, uh, budget plan, is to show how things could be itemized, where this is taking, you could easily replace some of these, um, line items if it, if there's a pickleball, you know, each. You know, if, if we typed in six of those, it'll give you that number, where you could change it to four. So you could also kind of go back and manipulate this spreadsheet, you know, and be, or if you want to move it to a different park, maybe you only, or maybe you want to split it. So I think that's, that's the intent, is basically making this a little bit more usable and functional as you go forward.
Well, and as Mayor Pro Tim pointed out, I mean, we are an environment, or, uh, Oder pointed out that, um, that we are an environment where, yes, I don't want us to use funding that we put millions of dollars into a park for, you know, it, we'd have a grand opening and two weeks later, someone's completely trashed it. And the other thing is like, I do think there are some simple things that could be done. Like, um, a week and a half ago, the library had some children's event and I, I thought, um, I'm assuming it was our parks people that did this, but they put up like, it was just some netting or whatever, and I thought, well, that was good. But that right there tells me they also need a fence and sooner versus later, because that road is quite dangerous and I'd hate for a child to get hit. So I think there's some that maybe just, there are some small improvements at parks that can be done, just improve safety, public safety.
I think that, that'll be key as we're developing these short-term and midterm action items, is to also get that feedback, you know? Make sure we have some of those recommendations in that short term, things that could be low-cost, that low-hanging fruit, uh, to get done quickly. Yep.
As much consideration, uh, in your planning process, yeah, I use this example. Some churches have seating capacities X, and then you can open up doors and walls for overflow. In other words, you don't tear down a wall, you know, you don't have to move plumbing or electrical. So if our parks have an organic capability to enlarge themselves for a small price, in other words, we don't have to change the floor plan of the utilities and what a power is and so, that would be, cause I, I, I agree, the, to go à la carte, probably be the best way to go to start, based just on funding. That's why I was curious if we can think forward, how we can get other people's dollars to help us achieve our objective and being a good steward. Uh, we have a pretty good track record of going after grants, but if we can, um, à la carte and then have the foundational concept where whatever happens to that park in the future, we don't have to dig up anything, you know, or, or the pipe's already there, we just do some minor stuff, connect and move on. I think that would be, uh, a sound investment. And then can we serve as a possible overflow to Fort Walton Beach Jet Drive? Where they have those big tournaments and, you know, could we lease out our, uh, some of our space when they have such an overflow? In other words, be an alternative to Fort Walton Beach and other cities, but, excuse me, I agree with my fellow councilperson that you were, we need a, something that shows that it works and then be able to lean forward. But, uh, as we deliberately intentionally plan for future use at every location, so, uh, we can get the biggest bang for our buck.
And I think for a couple of the larger parks where we're showing those, uh, multipurpose fields, I think that's where you're also kind of getting that bang for the buck. It's not just one thing, you can really use it for a, potentially overflow for tournaments. I think the, in terms of the budget, you can look at some of those multipurpose fields as the lowest cost, maybe a, I think it was like a dollar a square foot for just irrigated grass fields. Or if it's gonna be used for tournaments, you might need to look at turf fields, which might be ten dollars a square foot. So again, it's kind of what, what's the intent, especially long-term?
I have a question, long-term. So let's just say in a perfect world, we get all of this funded and we do everything that's here, okay? How much staff do you anticipate being able to appropriately maintain this? Because it does need to be maintainable for our city employees.
And that's where we definitely want to include, um, looking at that total cost. It includes that operations and maintenance. We can't just say, let's put in a big splash pad and all these pickleball courts without thinking about maintenance staff. And that has to be part of the budget consideration for that lifecycle. It's not just.
Right, cause our, our city has a very limited number of staff and I, they, they wear many hats in our city and they do provide a lot of roles for our city. And so I don't want to overtax and overburden the employees.
Yeah.
At the same time.
Yeah, that's, it's very important to think about the, the staffing component of this.
One of the things I noticed, um, there was for obstacles and stuff, you know, in Spring, over in the Springdale Park, we've got a lot of space. Is there like a way to do an agility course for dogs or something like that? I mean, I know you've got the parks, but you know, that's for dogs, but if you actually had an agility course somewhere, cut back on the pickleball a little bit, okay, sorry.
Slamming that pickleball.
Well, we don't need that.
We don't need a tennis court there either.
There's not, yeah.
Mariestor has a C group.
You, you said Springdale or Bryn Mawr?
No, I know, Springdale, so we need.
Springdale. That, that's a large area.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's a big space, so I mean, that, you know, an agility course.
What's an agility course?
For larger, like of the breeds that.
That need obstacles and things.
Oh, obstacles, okay.
You know, and, um, yeah. Yeah, where's the senior park?
Yeah, that'd be fun.
But, um, I mean, I, like you said, these are all conceptual and they can all, we can block, you know, cut and paste and, and everything. The community garden, has, has that conversation been had with, with, okay? Okay.
What's their input?
They haven't talked to them.
Oh, they haven't talked?
So at least from the community.
Then we would maintain the community garden. We would be the ownership of the community garden if we moved it over, it would, it wouldn't be as it is now then. We would be taking the payments, we would be, is that how it would be if we moved it over that way?
Not, I mean, not necessarily, I mean, so the way that, when we, cause we all looked at this as staff as well.
Right.
And one of the concerns that we had was with adding a bunch of activities here and then having the garden, is that going to be a conflict?
Right.
And do we have more space somewhere else?
Right.
To where it was centrally located and people could walk to it, um, or bike or however in town. Um, and so, I mean, I think that's the kind of feedback we really want to get, is do we want this park in particular to have these types of activities? And it could be, it could be one set of pickleball courts and a soccer field and a little playground, and that could be it. Um, it doesn't have to be all of this. You know, or do you want to have, um, so if you think about Springdale Park and then Elliott Park and then Bryn Mawr, those are our three large parks. Um, and they're in locations where pretty much everyone in town would then have access to one of these larger parks. And so are there specific amenities that you want in each one of those three parks? Those are the types of things that we are really trying to get out of this so that we can plan for that moving forward.
Sir, has, uh, with both of, uh, Mayor and Pro Tim and, and when, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Sutton, the relationship that we have with Herbert Field, first sound, their MWR rec on, on the water side is pretty saturated. I would suggest to council, think of having a dialogue with them, that we want to partner with our parks, you know, and invest, you know, giving their personnel.
The basketball court right there.
Enjoy, because if you go and look at the MWR, if you go through for the sound side, you take a right, you go down there on a weekend, you can't find a place to park. It is truly saturated. What if we partnered, you know, you can, some MWR dollars for our, I mean, whatever how that would manifest, but give them another reason to partner with the city of Mariestor because of the relationship that we have with First Sound.
If I may caveat on that also, I'm thinking the same thing for the county. What if we would have the Okaloosa Championship Pickleball between Crestview, Fullerton Beach, Destin, da-da-da-da? And again, now we're talking, can we get TDC money? We are gonna advertise this and all of a sudden we're gonna have people coming from California and Alaska, coming to the Panhandle, play pickleball and become the, wait a minute, cause if we get, the more partners we can get to buy in on this.
Yep.
I need the county and everything else. And again, I'm glad to go TDC and ask the question. I mean, hey, what if we opened this up and we became? I mean, hey, what if we opened this up and we became the Northwest Florida Pickleball Championship of the world, you know, whatever. But something along those lines. And then, the other thing I like about this, we can always adjust it. If we decide we only start out, go small, three pickleball courts. But then after a year or two, it all of a sudden, oh man, the place is backed up, you've got to make reservations, well, wait, maybe we add three more. Again, it's easier to add on, that they built six of them, we only needed four.
Nobody used it.
Yeah, see, so I'm, I'm all for, we'll see how much it gets used. Also, again, how much the county is willing to step up, the Crestview and Fort Walton Beach. I bet Single Bio doesn't probably have many, if any. But again, if we can make it where they can come over or our military friends.
Their money will spend good, Mary Esther.
Let's not put ourselves in this little circle. Let's think outside the box a little bit.
That was a level of influence that you had when you were the, on the commander's program. They're looking for ways to partner, and I think we should just look at the First Sound, go all the way to the
Well, and.
TDC and state.
And Mayor Proton Motor is right, it's, you know, we're in an environment where not everyone wants to go over to Destin or, you know, it's, they, because of traffic and especially in the summer months when all these activities are being used, it would be great to have partnerships, you know, people don't want necessarily to drive to Crestview because of the traffic. And I get because of 98, but we are in a unique spot that we can, it's a lot of different variety of communities. We've got an, you know, airport that people fly into for tourism, and they do come for softball tournaments. I mean, Panama City is known for like T-ball tournaments and all kinds of stuff, you know, it's, so I'm sorry, I was hearing something, it was throwing me off. Okay. So I do think there's a lot of potential for partnerships. But yeah, it's, like I said, it's, I do worry, like I said, about like the staffing issues, you know, long-term, because we, we also want to keep in mind that to be able to keep these partnerships, they also need to be maintained. And I don't want to put an undue burden on the staff that we do have, is my biggest concern.
The other one I would advise you gentlemen to look at, the Air Force Special Operations Command, Heritage Museum, they're talking about putting in the front of the Herbert Field. They're estimating 20 to 30 million dollars. They're going to redesign the whole front of the base, including Cody Avenue, which is the main drag going in there. But their envision is, they're going to build this museum, kind of like the Navy Museum over there, and you will show up and spend four to six hours at this museum airpark, which is going to put a whole lot of people on 98 and coming in here to get something to eat and hit McDonald's and whatever, da-da-da-da. But this is something they're already working at, the state level and the federal level, looking at funding. So again, it's something that we're going to be involved in this, whether we like it or not, that, yeah, it's coming. So again, we can tie all this together and look at the habit and the plan. Because again, once they get done with there, hey, there's this nice pickleball court, but they've got a nice water park over here, we can go here, here. All of a sudden, they're spending three days, not just six hours.
That's okay. Yeah, they can come here and eat in the park.
That's it. They got plenty of hotels right here, da-da-da-da. And so, yeah.
Maybe, maybe we could even decorate Springdale with, I don't know, bombs or, you know, I mean, but well, I mean, to correlate, you know, no, obviously not active ones, but like, you know.
No, thank goodness.
But I mean, you know, it's, you know, or it's, we, we help name a park after, you know, a distinguished, you know, airmen.
We had a, we had a veteran that lived in that area. He died, he was like 92 when he passed. He was in, gosh, like what, Korea, Vietnam, wasn't he in World War II as well? And he was in all, I mean, so many, and he lived in the Springdale neighborhood.
Yeah, we, we have some amazing, you know, dedicated service members that, you know, really contributed to our community. So I think that would also maybe do some partnership with our base and.
I think this whole idea, the timing is, couldn't come at a better time, far as bringing Mariestra into the future. So as we look for creative ways to fund, we may get enough funding, what was that, 28 million dollars was the total price?
Just over 20.
Yeah, so maybe we come up with 16, 17 million dollars in joint use dollars. And I agree with the fellow councilmen, you know, the long poll and the intent is going to be sustainment. You know, so getting sustainment and staff, you know, but I think this, this whole idea couldn't have come at a better time in Mariestra's future because it could be a game changer for us with that museum going in, that's a plus for us far as offering where they can go for lunch, where they can relax, what, you know, what else they can do while they're here. And we can really parlay it into a great, if we could do with this and maybe that pipeline going north for the waste, you know, it would be a little easier to fund. You never know.
Do you have enough information?
I think we have plenty.
I just want to add one thing, Fullerton Beach Rec Center is adding 13 pickleball courts, covered courts with a center court for tournaments and stuff.
Not surprised at all.
Four, how many?
13.
Need 14. Covered, air-conditioned pickleball courts.
There were a couple of comments about covered courts, so that, we could add that as a line item so you could see at least maybe the cost difference, and maybe it's not all covered or.
Microphone.
Kevin Canoy, I'm with Bard Design Solutions. I, I was going to say, we're, we're actually, we're working with Panama City, they're, they're in the other end of the spectrum where they have 60-something parks and they want to divest. So you guys are in the good spot. You guys have room to grow, but smartly grow where, you know, it's not like you've got to spend 20 million bucks and take care of this. I think some of the bigger parks can be phased. We do a lot of phasing. So I know that we'll, we'll definitely work with that and try to form, this is your, this is your plan, this is your parks, and just trying to help you phase it as, as you can, you know, bite chunks off or whatever and partner with Herbert. So that's, that's why we're here, so.
Thank you.
It is pouring.
Gentlemen, Okaloosa County Board of Commissioners spent 10 million dollars to buy a cruise ship. They're going to sink out into the Gulf of Mexico to make it a dive spot. 10 million dollars of TDC money. It ain't costing the citizens of Okaloosa County a dime. Now we got Escambi County, Bay County trying to bribe, I shouldn't use the word, influence Okaloosa County. Can you put it more on our side than that side? Because they've realized divers from around the world are going to fly into these airports and want to go out and dive. So again, that's why I said about this, contact the county. If they've got 10 million dollars laying around, yeah, okay, I'll, I'll take a small portion of that and, you know, we, we, again, we can call it the Okaloosa County whatever park, as far as I'm concerned, if they throw in some money, and in the same way with maintenance, if they've got extra bodies, we were helping them out on Mariestra Boulevard and some other places, hey, I mean, I don't put more on the staff, but ask these, I mean, what's the worst thing to say? Well, no, we're not interested. Okay, we try.
Well, and Mayor and Council, we've had some of, just so you know, we've had some of these discussions about certain fields, especially overflow when they have tournaments. And so we'll certainly continue those discussions. I think a big piece of this though is when we look at these three parks in particular, and we don't have to resolve this tonight, but are there certain things where you look at it and you go, this really just doesn't fit the neighborhood? And, and/or maybe it should go at a different, in a different park? And if that's the case, please let us know. Because like I said, you have, we have three parks in the community where pretty much, whether it's Bryn Mawr, it's Elliott or Springdale, you can walk or ride your bike to that park. And we have a number of smaller parks, right, that serve probably a different purpose. And so as you look at these concepts, if there's something you see that you feel like we really don't need that, if there's something you see that we need to have, for example, do we need to have a small dog park in each one of these? And if the answer is yes, then we can put that into the draft. And then, you know, once we get to the end, we'll prioritize them and then start putting them in the CIP, and then coming up with the funding.
I just have one last question. This whole thing is based on 76 citizens?
Well, we're taking some of the input from the original city vision plan that also had some park component to it. We had stakeholder, two stakeholder meetings, the staff questionnaire that had 16 staff members.
The people, they're going to want to use this. Is any interest about maybe going out there more than 2% of the population? Just an idea, I mean, because you start building stuff, then people are going to say, anybody, what, what's going on? I didn't have any say-so in this, and you're going to go, well, you, you should have came to the meeting. There was only 76 people that, and then they're going to say, 76 people is going to decide what these parks are going to look like, what about the rest of the people that are going to have to foot the bill? And I don't know, I just thinking maybe not, somehow get to the other people, bang on, we'll go, the council could go door to door and ask these people. Just, just.
Sure.
Get more than two, one, 2%.
I mean, sometimes we, well, before the plan gets adopted, you can publish the plan and get feedback from that.
The war bill.
So that there's something to respond to. So that could be another opportunity. No, absolutely.
Before we, and we're not spending money yet, but once we get to that point,
Yep.
to spend the money on something people want, and they go, what the hell did you put five dog parks when, you know, we don't, I don't want them, and then we.
But if we keep doing that, we'll never get this.
That's true. No, there's a happy middle.
We're just not going to get, we keep having meetings and meetings. You have to show up, you don't show up.
All right, well, that's right. The election, if you get 20%, that's impressive. Really? It's a total election. I mean, really? But okay, that's, that's one of my, one of my first questions, someone's complaints is, did you vote?
Right.
I don't want to hear it.
Yeah.
If you don't vote, you had your chance.
Yep, and we, we also make sure that the.
Five years from now, we haven't moved in it. I don't want to do that.
It's, it's always, it's a, it's a good point, because it's always a challenge to get feedback. But the Tehran's point, and we did get almost 300 responses when we did the vision plan, a lot of these are pretty common themes.
Yeah, sure, everything here is nothing radical.
And I guarantee you, Mayor, that when we pick one of these projects and we start going through the formal design, that specific park, that we'll probably get a little bit more feedback on how to, on how to refine it.
Tell them we'll raise the taxes.
Any thought of a golf course?
Ooh, putt-putt? Putt-putt?
Better than nothing. I mean, just, I don't know, you got this golf. Anyway, thank you very much for your, your time.
Thank you for having us.
Appreciate it.
Until next time.
We'll get something back. Next, next meeting?
No. A little time to refine it, so I think, I think in later July.
Thank you for coming.
You're sure.
And thank you for Jesse Rogers.
Yeah, absolutely.
That, that, that concept was beautiful.
Yes.
Yeah.
They're very much.
We might get sooner than later. All right, 6.2, can we continue? 6.2 is a resolution 25-05, approving the professional services agreement for Red Speed Florida LLC. We've talked about this, and I think we've already done it one time. You have to read the beginning again?
Resolution number 25-05, a resolution of the city of Mariestra, Florida, approving the professional services agreement with the, with Red Speed Florida LLC to implement the city's traffic safety camera program and agreeing to be bound by the terms and conditions of the city of Plantation, Florida, purchasing agreement governing that purchase.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve resolution 25-05, approving the professional services agreement with Red Speed Florida LLC?
I make that motion.
Okay, have a first?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Go ahead and vote. And we are unanimous. Thank you. 6.3 is a progress update on City Hall. City Manager going to take care of that? Or who is?
Yes, sir. So Mayor and Council, just a couple of things on this. So, I mean, I think the project itself is going pretty well. Certainly people have taken note of the paint. You know, folks usually see paint and think we're moving in next week. Now we've still got some time. It's still going to be September, likely late September, early October is the goal. You know, as expected with every project, there are changes. One of the, the big things that's come up, and we don't necessarily have to do it right now as a part of this project, but hurricane shutters. We are not required to have them. However, it has been highly recommended that we add those to the project. That is an expensive piece, and so we will have to bring that back to you. That does not fit within the entire budget that we had. And so wanted to make you aware of that now rather than later. But certainly for the City Hall, and I probably don't have to do much convincing here, to be able to put those shutters down and just know it's taken care of would be a huge way to think off of public works as they spend time trying to clear stormwater, you know, drainage areas to prepare for a storm. Because we'll still have other places as well that we'll have to board up windows. So if there's a way we can fit it in the budget, we would strongly recommend that we add that to the project.
Do you have any preliminary estimates?
So I do, yes. So it's going to be between 50 and 60,000 for those.
Now, is that for shutters? I mean, are there other alternatives, like the film that you put on or the, 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 not necessarily shutters, they're more like the fabric?
I don't know about fabric. They looked at the film, and the problem with the film on those windows was that they stated that the frames of those windows themselves would not, the film wouldn't help.
So with the shutters being installed, could that then also work as like an operational center for our staff that is out maintaining?
That is a.
Safe building is what I'm trying to say for them to work out of.
Difficult question to answer without an architect or an engineer really digging into it.
Yeah, the vault, we could stick them in the vault.
Correct, the vault is probably fairly safe, but, but kind of getting, and, and there's a generator, but getting to, I think what Ron, you were with Bard, said earlier about the idea of designing, you know, a facility that can also be used as a shelter. My experience with that is that it often, there can be some benefits, like if you absolutely have to have a shelter, it's great to be able to have that funding. But the level of, of engineering and hardening and certification.
She was more meaning just.
It's quite high.
Staff.
For staff, like, yeah, that's.
That, you know, that they're not over in the little building over here, you know, and all that, that they actually have a safer kind of home.
So Sean's not hiding under his truck. He actually has a safe building to go hide into when we've got 90 mile an hour winds.
So.
Sean will be gone.
Certainly, certainly after a storm, yes. I would say that building with shutters, yes, ought to be in pretty good shape. What I'm, all I'm suggesting is that it wouldn't necessarily be a rated shelter.
Right, I just would like to make sure that it's at least safe for the staff that does come in on an emergency level, that they at least have a space to be safer in.
Could we push this to the next fiscal year funding?
The, the shutters, they could be. I want to say that when they get ordered, they actually get ordered with the exact color. So they, they certainly could be pushed to the next, to the next budget year. By the time we move in, we'll be pretty close to that.
Almost the end of hurricane season anyway.
Yeah, at this point, it's just a matter of, of getting your feedback and making you aware that that is not something that's currently in there as a part of that budget.
The shutters, are we talking the metal? And, okay, so, for example, the one I have from my upstairs, on the inside of my house, there's a crank and it thing rolls down and it's permanently, and I've seen them also on the front doors and things like this. Or is this one of those, you put the metal in and tighten it up? Or I've also seen clear plastic ones, which that allows light in, where when I put my metal ones up, it's pitch black in there. I mean, it, even though it's noon, it looks like it's midnight. So my, what kind of shutter, are we mechanical or electrical?
So if you recall what was there before they started the project, they were, I think those are actually plastic, it was like a hard plastic. So it's the same look and they just come down and attach. But they are, these are, my understanding is these are not like your residential shutters, these are commercial grade shutters.
That would help with insurance on the building too, having that, would there be?
Potentially, yeah. I would hope so. Potentially, yeah, I would hope so.
It, it, it helps with mine, for my insurance, it helped with that also. If the, if the roof rafters have the strapping and things like that, that lowered my homeowner's insurance by like twenty-five percent, which is nice, as compared to what.
Next hurricane insurance. That's cheap insurance.
Yeah, any of those improvement, also, it's a lot nicer to come back, and you don't have to replace a lot of this stuff. Just pick up all the limbs and leaves everywhere, so. Only a matter of when, yeah.
Okay.
So, the other item on this was the, we'd gone back and forth with the architect about the signage for the building. So their original proposal is to have the lettering on the side of the building that faces Mariester Boulevard, um, and to remove the, uh, the monument sign that's out there. Um, I know the, the team of the architect, with the architect stated that that's more of a commercial look when you have a monument sign, and so they highly recommended, uh, moving forward with the lettering on the Mariester Boulevard side of the building. Um, and then either doing a, uh, similar version of that on this wall, or having a mural, um, painted on this wall. So I kinda wanted to get your general feedback first on if you were comfortable with the signage on the, on the east side and the mural on the west side, or if you prefer to have signage on both.
I like that idea.
I like doing the mural.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cuz why would you even wanna sign on the west side? I mean, the people in the mall would come out and go, there's a building there, you know, I mean, a mural would be kinda pretty.
Right, but we could do some type of City of Mariester mural on that west side, and then the signage on the roadside.
Or we could put out like a, was it, the, the, Fort Walton Beach, they did the contest for.
Oh, the best.
Yeah.
Well, and downtown Fort Walton has a lot of murals throughout it right now, so.
Very busy.
Yeah.
So, along those lines, I mean, we, we, I think we are kinda blessed with quite a few artists. I mean, I think we know from some of these art projects, um, there are a number of artists in this area, and so if council wants to go, uh, for the mural, um, we could look at some local artist, um, and maybe get some proposals from them.
Yeah.
And then we can decide as a group.
Well, and even, you know, maybe have the council, you know, choose the top three, and then we have the citizens input, like what they like as well. The, um, the other thing, I, and I believe I mentioned this to you, that I'd like to see before our walls are closed up, is that we do some type of time capsule that involves all of our staff, like everyone. I don't care what they do in the city, but if they are employed and get a check, it'd be nice to have everybody sign something, you know, put some local mementos, you know, a city coin.
Two dollar bill.
Two dollar bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, we won't put him in it yet, although his ashes will go in it probably later, yeah.
In the bank chute.
Yeah, we'll put him in the bank chute, but, uh, but I do think that would be nice to have some type of thing from all of our staff and everyone who's had a hand in it.
You could almost do a time capsule thing also.
Yeah, that's what she was saying, yeah.
And then in fifty years, a hundred years, you dig it up and say, oh my God, what were they thinking back? You have for reelection then, Bernie? I don't plan to be here in fifty more years, we won't go.
They are terrible.
City Manager, sir?
Yes, sir.
Uh, since the one question came up about the shutters, any other issues that we didn't foresee coming with the building?
There's a number of smaller things, I would say the next largest item, and we'll, we'll bring these to you, um, at a future council meeting, because we haven't approved any change orders yet. We're still asking for pricing on some of these things. Um, but like the sidewalks and the curb around the main parking lot, those need to be replaced. Um, for two reasons, the, the biggest one is that what we found was that the drainage, at some point, actually was running through, was running underneath the sidewalk, which was good. And then at a certain point, that was disconnected, and the pipes are now above ground, and they flow over the sidewalk. Well, during a rainstorm, that is a slipping hazard.
So I would, now, I'd be floating, huh?
Correct, um, and so what I was, yeah, what I was, what I was hoping to do is get feedback on the shutters, and then we will bring this, um, back to you for the, um, change orders. Um, I'd rather do it in, in, in one or two instead of a bunch of small little change orders. Um, some of it's like adding a window, um, in one, one office, um, little things.
Your office?
Actually, yes.
So that his assistant isn't.
Who else put a window in, you know? The, the other, the other one I would suggest you look at, uh, I walk by there several times a week, uh, the flagpole light, it's a big rectangular, and it's kinda yellowish. I don't know if it's the heat or whatever, but if we're gonna have a flag and it's gonna be flying, it needs to be, make sure we can light it up really well.
Yep.
I knew a contact with FPL.
Well, the, the flagpole is, in the future, if we ever get an opportunity, uh, not now, but I, I think it needs to be in front of the building, not past the building, there by the island there, cuz, you know, if we have any ceremonies or anything, our flagpole is nowhere, I mean, it's, I don't know why they put it where they put it, but, uh.
They didn't care.
But it, not, I'm not advocating any kind of relocation, but in the future, in front of the building would be a better place for it.
With the city flag.
Yes.
Okay, are we done with the City Hall now?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay, let's move on to PAWS. Wanna talk about PAWS?
Yes, sir, so you've got a copy of the contract that staff received, is, is, I think you all are aware, they canceled our service last week. Um, we, uh, we did inform them we would be having this discussion tonight. Um, from the time that this discussion started, the concern from staff was not necessarily the proposed cost. Um, I have been in charge of a shelter before, and the cost that's in this contract, um, is pretty in line, especially for the number of calls that we have had over the last couple of years. Um, the concern that, that I've had, that some of, uh, my peers have had, has been that every city has a different rate. Um, and to be quite, uh, clear, Mariester has had one of the better rates out of all of those, um, for a long time. Um, for a number of years, we weren't receiving bills, even though we asked for them. So, you know, there is some history here. Um, at the end of the day, it is hard, however, for staff to recommend approval of this contract when, um, there are still other contracts, uh, that, uh, have lower rate. Um, and so, that is what we have pressed from the beginning, that's what we would continue to press. Um, and so, wanted to get your feedback on the contract you have in front of you. Um, my suggestion moving forward is that I'll reach out one more time and see if we can make any headway. Um, uh, beyond that, I think we have to look at all the options. Um, there are other cities in Okaloosa County that are in the same boat that we're in, and they will have to do something. Um, uh, they will likely do something as well, and so, um, I will reach out to them as well to see, um, where they're at in this process. Um, as you know, I think Crestview, I don't remember how many years ago it was, three, four years ago, um, took it back in-house, so the north county is kinda covered by Crestview. Um, the south county, um, has still been using PAWS for service.
I believe Niceville might be trying to do their own.
So, and I, I've, I've spoken to, um, Niceville, spoken to Destin, and so, like I said, there, most cities are going to do something else. Um, Hayward can certainly chime in and correct me, but I don't believe the municipalities are required to provide service. I'm not suggesting that you don't provide animal control service, but I do not think it's necessarily a required service. Um, but, uh, we have a draft of the contract, so you can see the cost. Um, again, it's not the cost that concerns me, it's the fact that there are other entities paying less than we are, and we're requesting the same exact service.
So I have a question, because, and, and it may need to go to Hayward, but if municipalities are not required to have it, and the county has a contract, can the county not just bill us for, because I believe they get a different rate than they're trying to charge us? So can the county not just send us a bill and we cut out?
I don't know that PAWS would provide service in our jurisdiction. Like, they just wouldn't answer calls, I think is the concern.
Not like the chair department, but that's another thing, like, so if you go past our city limits, you know, past Harrow, Mariester, not proper, that's considered a rule of Okaloosa County, so PAWS will go there?
Correct, because the unincorporated areas are covered by Okaloosa County.
Okay, that's a, that's an issue with the county. Um, I brought up to you earlier when we were talking Santa Rosa County. Could we look into Santa Rosa County covering? We don't have to necessarily do PAWS.
Correct, so I think that's when it, it gets into looking at what other options are available. I think that Crestview, for example, I think for an interim period, had Walton County provide service. And so, um, you know, at the end of the day, if we can't get a contract that's comparable to the county's contract, um, working with, uh, Niceville, with Destin, or potentially one of the other counties, um, we can look into those options, the question after that, though, is if you can't get service relatively quickly, uh, do we look at a temporary solution with PAWS? Um, you know, a six-month contract until we're able to obtain service. Um, those conversations have not been had, but that's certainly something that we can look into.
Why'd they cancel the contract? PAWS. We weren't paying them?
Well, they weren't.
We, we are paying based on our contract, my understanding was that they wanted a contract in place sooner.
So I, I'm, let's just say, going forward, I'm not comfortable with this contract, and I would like to look at alternative.
Correct.
Options.
Everybody feel that way?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
We all feel that way.
Well, Richard, you, you can say your own yes, we just said it for you.
He's nodding, he was drinking coffee. He was nodding, drinking coffee, you can do two things.
Really?
Is that okay with you now?
Oh, cer- certainly, I guess the only question for clarification is, is, I think the last correspondence I had was pretty direct, and it was, um.
Yeah.
Are you willing to provide service at the same cost as Okaloosa County? Um, and so if they do come back and say, yes, we are, um, do you want us to proceed and bring that back, or would you just prefer us to look at other alternatives at this point?
Well, yeah, we just have to look at the contract and see where it benefits us, too.
Or to see if they would do like a six-month contract while we maybe look into alternatives.
If the answer is no, and it's a call for service, what are we gonna do?
Uh, nobody would respond to the call for service.
Not, I know that, but so what are the city going to do? If there's no one to do it, and there's a need of some sort of.
Drag it to the county, the unincorporated?
We all pay county taxes.
But, you know, the point is, we can't say call the county, cuz county's not gonna come. Now, what does exactly this PAWS do? Not only removal of dead, but what if there's an animal incident?
Correct, so PAWS handles all of those, so when there is a dog at large, um, the resident calls PAWS, PAWS comes and, um, picks up the animal. And if the dog needs, dog or cat, um, needs any kind of veterinary care, that is on PAWS to provide that care, um, if eventually euthanasia is required, they cover that cost. Um, so those were all things that were covered in the contract that we had. Without that contract, there is nobody to provide that service.
So if there's a menace in a neighborhood in Mariester, the citizen is gonna be looking at us for a solution?
Correct.
So what are we gonna do?
That's what we're, we have to figure out our alternatives.
We're looking on that.
My point is, in the interim, while we're trying to staff that.
Thing that Niceville and Destin are doing.
I don't wanna be held over a barrel.
Oh, I agree with you, I just don't know.
Because I think they're trying to price gouge the city, and I don't understand why we're having to pay as a city more than they have a contract with the county.
I'm in lockstep with you.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, what, at ten o'clock at night, and there's some sort of crises, you know, with that citizen.
They call up West County Sheriff's.
Call the sheriff.
Yeah.
The sheriff said, well, that's not our job, I mean.
They're not gonna say, if, if a dog's a chewing on the leg of a person, the police are gonna probably come and shoot the dog or do something, okay, I mean, you know.
My point is, I just want us to try to make a decision.
Hayward's about to.
No, Hayward, what should we, what should we do?
Yeah, I don't know the answer of what you should do, I, I was looking at the contract, though, and if you did sign the contract under sub, uh, or paragraph nine, you are allowed to provide ninety days' notice. So you could use that as a way, should the price come in line, where you could be searching, cancel the contract with ninety days' notice. Uh, I think we all know, we, we, we shopped this several years ago. This is not an area that you have any vendors or other, other, other people, that's why Crestview ended up doing it in-house. Fort Walton Beach has the same concerns, their council, when I represented them, had the same issues, double taxation claims, uh, tried to go to Okaloosa County to maybe do some sort of county-wide contract, where, where then the cities would pay the county, and the county would, you know, manage the contract. But there was no interest in that, and from speaking with Jared, I don't believe there was any interest today either, so, uh.
That just, you said that double taxation, just that kinda.
And there are a lot of legal requirements, if you're gonna run, uh, this, as far as, uh, keeping of records, vaccinations, uh, if you're a kill shelter, how many, how many, you know, are killed, or, you know, moved to other shelters. So, there's a lot of, a lot of things that the vendor will have to do to comply with Florida law. Uh, some of you may remember, several years back, I forget the, uh, woman's name, but she was very particular about, uh, the fact that PAWS did not seem to be following some statutory record requirements. Uh, and she would often try to have the cities cancel the contract, and there were no alternatives, so. Uh, so, yeah, the short answer is, I don't know what the answer is, I, I don't think that there's a lot of competition or any competition. Uh, but you do have a ninety-day termination clause in this contract, should you get a price that you could stomach.
Would Crestview, would, would, would they do anything for us? Would they reach, would they come this far south?
We, we haven't asked, we haven't gotten to that point yet. Um, I, I think as all of you know, uh, you know, we, it's a week and a half or two weeks ago, um, uh, I did let PAWS know we were gonna have this discussion, so the cancellation, there was, there was no, I'm gonna cancel in two weeks if you don't, um, approve a new contract, it kind of, uh, just sorta happened. Um, and so.
I'm sorry, what about Emerald Coast Vet and some other vets, maybe they didn't wanna take it on?
Any, I'm sorry, I missed the.
You know, like Emerald Coast, uh, the, uh, the Emerald Coast, uh, vet, maybe some of the vets, they have a lot of, uh, maybe they might wanna take this on, this.
Oh, you mean the, the vet office is on the corner?
Yeah, they might wanna take it on as extra income, cuz they were pretty much set up for it.
He's on the board.
I mean, Santa Rosa County, with it being, you know, sharing a border with us, I mean, might be the, unless, you know, Crestview isn't taking over like Niceville, but I do think we need to reach out and at least have some conversations. Um, but, yeah, I, I don't, I don't like being put in a barrel with this, I, I, I think this is wrong.
Back with the same price as the county's getting.
That's one thing.
Then that's, you know, I get that.
That's fair, but.
And that's the feedback I wanted to get, and, and again, just to reiterate, cuz I know there's been a lot of discussion about cost. This is an expensive operation to run, so that has never been the argument that, that I have brought to PAWS. It's just been that, you know, you know, we, especially for us, we're very close to the PAWS location, so there's really no argument for why there should be a, uh, discrepancy in rates.
Well, and I don't think any of us are complaining about the actual rate, it's just, I do think it should be a fair rate, and this is not a fair rate.
So we'll, like I said, I'll reach back out one more time and see what response I get, and then we will look at, what I'm hearing is, we will look at kind of the full suite of options, whether there's an opportunity to partner with the other larger cities in southern Okaloosa County, um, or one of the, uh, Walton, either Walton. um, or one of the, uh, Walton, either Walton, um, or Santa Rosa, or potentially Crestview.
Does any of the cities not do it?
Right now?
So as of right now, I believe Niceville still does not have any service.
If something, like Councilman Carr was saying, if something happened in Niceville, uh, you're on your own.
The, the difference in Niceville is if they have a serious incident, they do have a police department to dispatch.
And the county's is up, theirs is up, what, August, September?
I believe August. So, and just, just for the record, so I mean, the current rate with the county is five dollars and fifty cents, and the proposal we received was six dollars and fifty cents, per capita, per person.
Per event?
Uh, no, it's per year. Per year.
Oh, per person.
So the, like, the taller, the, the total dollar amount, um, was roughly twenty-five thousand dollars for the year.
That doesn't include the cost of.
Twenty-six thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars, and if you add a seven hundred dollar fee one time, there's another, and then you do, whether it's high-end or low assistance, whatever, you're talking at one incident, either three thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars, or three thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars per month for one incident.
So for clarity.
We had a hundred incidents. Could go for a. Chi-ching, chi-ching.
Yeah.
For, for clarity, that actually is a, it was proposed originally as like a per-case versus population-based. Um, and so the actual amount, the total, is the twenty-six thou, that is the total.
Forty-six dollars.
Um, so that is just, we would pay them that amount every year, it would go up by a certain percentage each year, and that would be, that would be it. It would not be, it would not be per-call, no, so, that, that does have to be cleaned up, Hayward hasn't gotten his hands on.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's not.
I understand.
Yeah.
I understand.
I, that's what, yeah, I was thinking it was also the per-incident, the way it reads.
And my question was, seven hundred dollars for, for animal pickup, boarding, et cetera?
Easy.
Is, is that a month, is that for a day, is that a quarter? I mean, is that, using, I'm seven hundred, we can go get the Hampton Inn cheaper than seven hundred dollars a day.
There's, so the thing with animal control, and, and the reason why, unless the per-call was extremely cheap, that I would not suggest going that route, is because depending on the case, it can be very expensive.
We have that.
So, if, if you have an instance, if you have an instance where there are, you know, they pick up twenty dogs, um, that becomes very expensive, and so having it based on population means that every year we can budget, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars and be done with it. Um, so that would be, with any of these contracts, that would be our recommendation, unless it's just extremely cheap.
Yeah, cause there's currently ten, at least ten cats over right behind McDonald's.
They call them, they'll take them away.
Okay, so we'll just see what happens when she comes back with a lower.
Look at it in July, maybe?
Well, well, like I said, I'll reach back out to PAWS and provide you any feedback that I receive, if any. Um, and then we'll, uh, have those conversations with some of the other cities, um, in the county.
What were we paying before last year?
I do not have that number, but that contract had not been updated in.
Yeah, a long time.
Seven, eight, nine years.
It was inconsistent, the, the county's paying five fifty?
Correct.
So at five fifty.
Sure sounds like you managed one. There's another four thousand dollars for the.
Yeah.
For the difference.
Yeah.
Roughly.
Okay, you, you.
Anything else?
Have your assignment.
I don't believe so.
Anybody have anything else?
On this, or, or your comments?
Uh, comments, wanna go down to this, April, you got it.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, give a shout out to Jacobs, I have really seen them staying late, uh, they were late here Friday night. Earlier when I passed by, they looked like they were elbows deep into some stuff, um, and also last week, um, Sean, the Mariester Manor looks amazing, um, your team did a great job, and, uh, a lot of the residents are thrilled, so thank you for all the hard work. And you were looking a little rough last weekend, but it, it, the hard work definitely showed, and so thank you very much for your team, and, yeah.
You'll notice he has a really good tan.
Yeah. Okay, um, a couple things, um, the fence around Race Pond looks great so far, the, um, aluminum fencing. Um, I do have one question, though, where the culvert goes in, it's pretty, there's a pretty big gap, I mean, it, it, a small child could crawl under there, so I don't know if that's gonna be adjusted, or if it is that way for flow, I don't know. Um, a second one, um, I meant to bring this up last meeting, forgot, when I did my tour with Sean, Springdale Park back there, obviously it's in mayhem, can we please remove the, the bleachers? Can we please, they are horrible condition, put them in a scrap bin, they're just, they're not safe at all, period. And we're not gonna reuse them anyway, cause they're not even considered code for any sort of ballparks.
Yes, we've already discussed surplusing those.
Okay, yay, and then, um, let's see, oh, and, and then I talked to Jared about, uh, Veterans Day, or, you know, in moving forward, since we now have the city hall up on our, on the main fairway, I don't know if many of you guys have seen, uh, a city called Ringgold, Georgia.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but my aunt lives there, um, one of those flags this year was for my father, and my, one for my grandfather, one for my uncle, that were all veterans. Um, and wondering if there's maybe something that we can do along the similar line, now that we are, have a town center, we can do some sort of flags, uh, either, I think it'd be in front of the city hall would be nice, um, that type of thing. And what they do is they charge, I think it's like twenty-five bucks to sponsor a flag, and it's put up for, uh, Memorial Day and for Veterans Day. And then they have a whole bunch of Boy Scouts that come and help, and to get them all in on the weekends, you know, before. So something to look into, maybe in the future.
Richard? Over, I got a, a thing of, uh, Door Street, you know, by the church, there's a, you, you, you worked on the sewer and the drive, the sidewalks tore up, there's an indentation in the new pavement, you know, goes down, what, what, is that from a water, a sewer leak or something?
It's an abandoned sewer line, I'm Sean, I'm the director of Pollock Works, it's an abandoned sewer line, Jacobs will get around to, to fixing that, and then I'll come back and fix the road. But it's not the active sewer line, uh, an abandoned one was found in that area.
And that's what's sinking?
Yeah, and there's, there's a ban.
New road, they got a big, big sinkhole in it, the sidewalk we fixed when they finished that.
It's really disappointing, but it happens.
Oh, I had something, oh, I think it's Coler Street, when I walked by there, there's a small section of sidewalk that's, that's missing, there's no sidewalk there.
By North Street.
It's the North Street?
By the church.
Yeah, that's the, that's.
That's what I'm, we're talking about.
That's what you're talking about?
Yeah. Y'all, y'all did great, but they dug it out when they.
Yeah, they repaired it, and so it, it has to be poured back, it's, it's, it's part of the incident with the same, uh, sink area, yeah.
It's good to be here, uh, the next two meetings I won't, but this one, I'm glad to be here, thanks for your support. Over three hundred plus days, Dora did get her transplant, and she's on the other side of that issue, so it's, it's, uh, it's a good spot to be. So thank you for your support, uh, changing subjects, the yard a month sign, apparently some sprinklers have turned it kinda yellow. We had a new one, what, does anyone know about the one we had that was donated to the city?
Yeah, I do.
So really why we're not using it? We just prefer the old sign.
I like the old sign, it's metal and it's, the new one's made out of plastic, you know, that's the only reason, if you want me to use the new sign, I've got it, it's in my garage.
We just.
I can say that one we have. Uh, we'll look into that, okay.
It does look yellow.
Oh, it does look yellow.
Cause it's a nice sign, I mean, beautiful house.
Yellow, the yellow sign, all right, we'll see, I think it, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Glad to be here.
Good, when are you leaving?
Bernie! Whoa! Dylan, oh, I'm sorry, Hayward, you got anything? Your seat, yep, okay.
Did I talk loud enough for you, Hayward?
Dylan?
As always, ethics training, the Florida League of Cities is offering it on July sixteenth, please let me know if you wanna do it. Cybersecurity training by the end of the year, financial disclosure, this is your last reminder, because it is due July first. Check your mailbox. Uh, I will be in Miami for a, uh, Florida Clerk Conference from July thirteenth to July seventeenth. As always, if you need me, please try not to, and finally, I will be out of office on Friday, so if you need anything, please let me know on Wednesday.
Yeah, we pay you full-time or part-time? City manager.
Um, so, kinda to Dylan's point, just as a reminder, we will be closed on Thursday for, um, Juneteenth. Um, other than that, just thank you to all the staff for holding things down for the past week. Um, they did an excellent job, and like I said, Sean's got a better tan, so, uh, I, I'm sure they're glad to have all that, um, done behind them, uh, cause I know it's, it's, uh, yeah, it's.
He went to Costa Rica, and he.
He went to Costa Rica.
I can't afford to get tan, um, not, not with these genes, um, but, but yeah, so thank you, because y'all did an excellent job making sure everything got done, and, uh, and, um, looking forward to, to the next meeting.
Did you remember to pack up your lounge chair and put away your little umbrella drinks?
Anybody have anything else?
Thanks for the basket, we're adjourned.